Okay, so we'll get. We'll get started with the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, October 27th. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders, spending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the Governor's July 16, 2022 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Planning Board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or permit to attend this meeting. Can be found at the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person. And those who wish to do may attend remotely by following the instructions on this agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address board on any item that requires a vote. At a time before a board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponents of an item is permitted to have. And we keep track of that by monitoring online who is raising their hand and in the audience if there are people here who is raising their hand. All right, with that, we'll start with a roll call vote. We have a mix of in-person and remote members today, so we'll start with our remote member. Jeremy Ega.
Here, or not there?
Present. Pedro Pachano.
Present.
Malcolm Vick.
Here.
Jonathan Hankin.
I am here.
Brandy Nelson here. All right, great, we're all here. Thanks, everyone.
Just for the record, there's no members of the public in the room, and there's only two online.
Thank you, Chris. We will get started with Form A's. I don't believe we have any, though. No Form As. We'll move on to the minutes of October 13th, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do it a second.
One second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Any further discussion? Jeremy, anything for you? No, stay on. We'll then. Uh, Jeremy, your vote?
I.
Pedro.
Hi.
Malcolm.
Hi.
Jonathan.
Hi.
Brandy, I. All right, our next item is a Planning Board statement regarding Husetonic Waterworks. Did everyone see the draft letter? Could we circulate that out?
No.
After the meeting?
I don't think I saw.
Right.
I saw the old one.
Okay, hold on. We probably need to, let's see, where did that go?
If you send it to me, I could put it on screen.
Sure.
I don't think I've seen. Eileen, I only just now forwarded you the. Planning Board. Materials for this week, sorry.
I may not be able to do this on my phone, guys. I'm sorry.
Did you read?
I did, yeah.
Let me search. What do you know?
Chris, if you want to, can you put it on screen? I'm sorry, everyone. It's not a very long letter.
It would be the first thing we edited on the screen.
Yes, and since we don't have a tremendously large agenda, we'll give that just a minute to come to.
I thought we were going to solve the housing issue.
We solved, we endeavored to solve all the issues.
I agree.
Okay, here's a letter Brandy on screen, so folks at home should be able to see it, too.
Okay. So Pedro had proposed a letter a couple of weeks ago, and we had an initial discussion at our meeting. Um, and Pedro and I had a conversation. Um, my concern was putting additional work burden on town staff. And so I think just by editing the letter a little bit to remove requests to be, you know, like proactively kept in the loop. I think we can take it upon ourselves to stay up with the information that's being posted by the select board on their folder. So do you want to read this? So the Planning Board would like to express their support for the efforts of the Select Board and the Board of Health to compel. Husetonic Waterworks Company to correct deficiencies in water quality experienced by the users served by Husetonic Waterworks. The residents of Husetonic are enduring. Oops, that's moving around and I can't.
Make it a little bit bigger.
Are enduring unacceptable water quality conditions without meaningful resolution. As a board concerned with the economic development of our town, we recognize that Husetonic is well positioned because of its existing infrastructure. To continue to meet commercial and residential development demands essential to economic sustainability. Not only does Husetonic, not only does Husetonic. Is a vibrant.
I think you mean is, instead of does.
Not only is Husetonic. This is what we're editing. A vibrant residential neighborhood. But it also has a strong commercial and industrial uses and opportunity for additional growth in all three areas. We also recognize that the current water quality situation. Is a hindrance to the economic development potential of the community. Uh, please keep us apprised of the ongoing efforts by the town. We offer any expertise or support we can render to help the process along, recognizing that the problem. Has been ongoing for far too long and that solutions are likely not to be implemented in the near future. We respect the responsibilities your board faces and the challenges of this issue. And hope you will keep us abreast of the situation respectfully.
There's one, there's one typo on the first paragraph. Yeah, uses instead of users, users. While they experience by the use, users.
Users, yeah.
Also, you're missing a word down below a little bit. Chris, could you page down a little bit? Um, more, more. Oh, no, it's not more. Is it, is, after we also recognize that the current water quality situation is a hindrance?
We also recognize that the current water quality situation is a hindrance to the economic development potential of the community. Is is very close to, it could be.
Okay.
Hindering.
In.
Is hindering?
Is hindering. It's not a hindrance. It, it, yeah, it either, yeah. Um, up on the, uh, I'm glad the last time he's mic open. Four lines up above that, it says, continue meet, it should say, continue to.
Continue, yes, to meet.
Say, to meet? No, to continue to meet, where the word provide is pressed down. Yeah.
Is it, is that right? Is hindering the potential?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's hindering the economic development, is that what you mean?
I know, but the economic development, it's really hindering the potential, not the, right? It's just economic development potential.
Well, you know, honestly, maybe we should say current water situation, because quality is only one facet. I was troubled to read in the paper that the fire department responding to Form L couldn't use hydrant flow. And I think they said they needed to run shuttles of tankers.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, they're worried about stirring up additional turbidity, which is thoughtful of them, but those hydrants should also function for the benefit of fire protection in the community. So.
Do you want to get rid of word quality?
And just leave it as water. I mean, I know quality is what's on the mind of the residents, probably more so than quantity, but it's, it's a two-fold issue.
Yeah.
We could say quality and quantity?
It's.
Say crisis, sort of situation. Water supply crisis. Water situation, water supplies. That's fine.
I think it's good.
Okay. We're okay with this in general. Jeremy, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, who else in the public is there? Is anyone raising their hands, Chris?
I would show up, but I don't see anybody.
Okay, oh, that little hand on the bottom one, sure, yeah, well, sorry.
Yeah, well, I didn't raise your hand before. It actually popped up on the screen.
I need to be more observant of that.
Yeah, that was true.
I didn't realize that.
Oh, see? See? Your mic's open, I mean.
It's open.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Oh, good. Um, way at the top. This is really pretty minor. Um. It says, Planning Board, and then I think, no. The first few words, Chris. Planning Board would like to express its support. Or Planning Board members would like to suppress, would like to express theirs. And Select Board is one word, lowercase b. That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, if there are no further comments from the public, then we would entertain a motion to send a letter to the Select Board as amended this evening.
So moved.
Okay, three seconds.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Malcolm and a second by Pedro. We have any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote. Jeremy, what's your vote?
I.
Jonathan, your vote?
I.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Pedro?
Hi.
Brandy, I. All right, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Pedro, for bringing that forward.
I appreciate everybody entertaining. Yeah, the thought, and you.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, it's important that we're all united in making sure the residents have clean water.
I think it's also important, I think, well, we brought up in the last meeting, is that it's really an economic development issue, not just a, a personal issue for the people who are currently. Suffering because of the water situation, but as Jonathan pointed out, you know, housing prices negatively. Husetonic are, are suffering as a result.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, next item on our agenda is the zoning amendments and strategies to increase housing, and Chris. Did you want to?
Yeah. Could we hold on a second? I, I had this letter remotely, and I just need to figure out how to save it.
Sure.
Talk to yourselves.
Do you want to email that to me?
I, I'm like remotely in Gateway Road again, so I don't know where I am.
You don't know where it is. Put it back on the screen, we'll screenshot it.
Yeah.
No, it's always in the recording.
Um, well, we could move on to Board and Subcommittee Updates, Issues and Concerns, and then we can come back to this. Um, so the one item I had put on the agenda, and I have forgotten to invite Jackie Kane to join us this evening, but. Steve Bannon and I received a, a, a letter of interest from Jackie Kane, who I think, I think all of you know, right? Jackie?
Um. She's been a good friend for 35 years.
Oh, really? I didn't realize your history was that long, Jonathan. Well, maybe that disqualifies her right then and there. Um. She has been working with a couple of different groups in the town, I think most recently the WED, the Boys.
Walking Tour.
Walking Tour Project. And she's looking for an additional way to engage in the community, and she and I met, I think she's probably talked to Jonathan about this, but she and I met a couple of weeks ago and. Just talked about what the role of an associate member entails. Um, and, you know, I, I let her know that a lot of it is sort of technical, um, yeah, language stuff, not necessarily big vision. We have like big vision ideas, but then we've got to work it into language and then take things to a town meeting. I think an area she thought she could be really engaged as an associate member is helping with some of the community messaging and outreach that we sometimes need. Um, as, as elements are being developed and introduced to the public to try and garner the necessary support at town meeting. So she is interested, I think, due to my own mistake of not inviting her here tonight, maybe we want to continue this at the next meeting and invite her to come, and, and you can hear directly from her.
Or we could just vote.
Or, or we could just vote if you guys all know her well enough.
We do.
Okay.
I, I don't know, Jeremy does. Jeremy, do you know Jackie?
I don't, I don't know, but, but I've heard enough.
Heard enough.
I think, I think her reason is a very good one, and not just in messaging and, you know, getting support for town meeting, but also just in general. You know, public outreach so that the, um, that the bylaws are really used by the public in general, not just developers, or, I mean, that's. That's great. And so I think that is one of the, like, under. Like, the underutilized functions that the board could have is really much more, I mean, I know. I know members of board are out there doing things, and Pedro with Ed, but, yeah, I mean, I, I, I definitely will vote yes, so.
And this is not intended to supersede the, the, the work you and Ed are doing on the radio or with the edge. There's more, more people who can help with more messaging, I think is a positive thing.
Is this a joint appointment?
I think we make a recommendation to the Select Board.
I thought it's a joint appointment. At least when I did, I thought it was, is that not right, Chris?
It is nodding that, that it's a recommendation to the Select Board and then the Select Board appoints.
So I moved that we recommended the Select Board that they appoint Jackie Kane as a associate member of the planning.
I'll second that. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So Malcolm made the motion, and Jonathan seconded, and Jeremy thirded.
Associate member, well, sorry for discussion.
Uh, do we have any further discussion, Pedro?
I'm reading in the bylaws, the associate. Be appointed for three-year terms by a majority vote of members of the Planning Board and Select Board.
Yeah, that's how I remember it.
All right, great, Jeremy, thank you.
So I'm in that motion to say that I moved that we, uh, appoint Jackie Kane as an associate member of the Planning Board.
Do we also need to send a recommendation?
And that we send a recommendation to the Planning Board, I mean, to the Select Board, that they endorse her as well.
Okay, great, so we have a motion. Do we have amended section by Jonathan? Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jeremy, how do you vote?
I.
Jonathan?
I.
Malcolm?
I.
Pedro?
I.
Brandy, I. Excellent, we'll bring her into the fold. She doesn't know what she did for her, does she?
I tried to warn her.
It's good to learn, because there's regional training, virtual training coming up, so it might be a good introduction for her.
Uh, BRPC just sent that out last week, right? Okay, okay, good, well, we'll get her plugged into that.
Yeah.
Um, so other Boards, Subcommittee Updates, Issues and Concerns, I have one more that we haven't listed, but does anybody else have anything?
Um, are we, are we talking about communities?
Yeah.
Um, well, I mean, the Housing Subcommittee that recently, and. We have advanced a, what's now a three-page worksheet on initiatives that, um. Uh, have been brought forward, and it's really just a ran, a, a list of initiatives. But what we're attempting to do is prioritize them by identifying who would be responsible. And what the level of effort would be and what the expected benefits would be for each of these initiatives, which is kind of where we're headed with this particular spreadsheet.
So for example, who would be responsible, meaning which board needs to take a particular action?
Yeah, for example, the first item would be target blighted properties to create new affordable housing units. Uh, there's a note in here to look at Pittsfield, which is doing that. It's been identified as a town issue, which probably means the. Uh, Select Board primarily. Uh, and then, uh, then that's, that's, that's the item. Uh, so there's a, there's, there's about thirty items on here.
Okay, okay.
And I'm mumbling, so, sorry, I mean.
So, um, related to that same topic of Housing Subcommittee, so, um, I think we've all gotten the information that Jonathan has stepped down from that Subcommittee. Um, and I think the Committee, and I talked with Malcolm, um, still has a potential to bring important issues up. For both the Select Board and the Planning Board to discuss and can act as a conduit for ongoing communication, so, um. We need to have an additional member, and Jonathan obviously, you're not going to be the member, because you've just resigned, and you have already served a term, Pedro. And Jeremy did not feel strongly about participating, and you already have a lot in terms of CPA, you're muted if you're.
Yeah, I, I, I was interested. Um, I just thought, um. Pedro would be better if he has interest in re. Um, but I didn't get to talk to him in the interim, so.
So I think you or I need to step in and.
I mean, I mean, I do, I do have interest in it.
Yeah.
So. I know, I know they ha, yeah, or it could be, I mean, I, I. I, I mean, I, I would have interest in it. I just, I know they're meeting during the daytime now, and I would have a hard time meeting during the daytime.
Um, where the, the meeting dates are really for the convenience of the members of the Committee, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that would have to be changed to, for you, Jeremy, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely have interest in serving a term.
So, okay. All right, so do we want to make a motion to, um, appoint Jeremy to the Housing Subcommittee?
Certainly.
Thank you, Pedro, do we have a second?
Well, I'll say.
Malcolm will second. Any further discussion? All right, Jeremy?
I.
I.
A cautious eye.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Brandy, I. All right, thank you, Jeremy.
Before you read that, one of, one of the sticking points that I brought up that I'm sure will be dropped now that I'm no longer on that committee, but I think warrants. The Planning Board's consideration is the fact that the short-term runoff by law. No reason specifically bans tenants from doing short-term runoff. And so I think that's something.
Yeah, I definitely, I definitely heard your point, and I, I, it was well taken by me.
Let's go on with this.
I thought it was a good point.
Okay, all right. Um, yeah, I mean, I think you pointed out, Jonathan, and, and this board knows very well that we sort of see the zoning as a living, breathing. Uh, dynamic entity and are forever tinkering with it.
Oh, I thought it was perfect.
It's not perfect in any way, shape or form, so, and our community is always changing, right? So the needs of the community need to be responded to. Okay, um, so that's Housing Subcommittee Associate Member. Do we have any other Board with any updates, concerns at the moment? All right, hearing none, we will check in with our esteemed Town Planner, City Town Manager on where we are technology-wise.
Well, as, as I was, I, I did the screenshot method to save the Waterworks letter. Then I realized we're recording the meeting anyways, like this.
Oh. We're learning this stuff, Alan.
All right, you want to move on to the Housing?
If you are in a state where we can, yeah.
Sure. So to pick up on, first of all, what Pedro was saying, with the Housing Subcommittee's matrix of housing-related actions, zoning, and otherwise. Uh, I am. In, involved in that document on the backside. And we'll definitely work with the Subcommittee to keep that updated through, through the Chair, through me. Uh, and my task given by the Select Board is to update the Select Board on some of the housing initiatives that are relevant to. Planning Board is doing, Housing Trust has funded, etc., and what staff is doing. Just on the basis of the policy directions of the master plan and previous planning documents. Including, for example, targeting blighted properties. Uh, so I will also be updating that matrix, and eventually, I think in November, it's on hold, reporting to the Select Board on that, and. And report to you all as well. Uh, on that note, you probably saw the news, we did receive a massive grant from Mastworks for the Housing Site in Husetonic, so that will pay for all of the infrastructure construction. For that, so that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars per unit. Yep.
Which is a little crazy when they double the number of units, it will be half of that.
Right, right, so it, it doesn't set the, the diamonds, so.
But is it, was the application tied to?
It was. Were based on that, and that infrastructure.
Three point two.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to accomplish that.
So Chris, I think you might be going in and out. I don't know if other people are having trouble hearing.
I mean, has her hand for you?
I can't, I, I can't hear, but I was, I'm dealing with a cat that's trying to eat my dinner. Um, but I, I was hearing something unrelated to Planning Board, too, so. Somebody.
The, the train did go by, so there was some extra background.
Places.
Um, and so I'll just recap for Jeremy and members of the public, so that the, the town was successful in securing a $3.2 million Mastworks grant. That's going to be able to provide for the installation of the infrastructure for the affordable housing that's being proposed on North Plain Road. Jonathan made a point and asked a question about the, uh, the cost per unit for the infrastructure. And, uh, Chris summarized that we have to at, at least put in, uh, the number of units that, uh, were, are proposed in the current plan. Um, so I think that's clear, so, and that's wonderful, thank you.
So, um, anyway, moving on to this Board's discussion of zoning, you got my email last week in advance of the meeting. Summarizing some of the things that this Board agreed upon in August relative to. Uh, two-unit, three-unit uses, et cetera. And so we wanted to pick up again where we left off last winter on the Stockridge Road zoning. Ideas, uh, which was an incentive zone idea. Um, there were some other things that I think we can and should look at, and Pedro and I have, uh, talked a little bit about this. Uh, revisiting Section 8.3.3, which deals with multifamily dwellings. And considering lowering the amount of land area required per unit. And. And looking at some of the other requirements there, including the open space requirement and the parking requirements that put other demands on parcels rather than allowing housing to be built there. They constrain the amount of housing that can be built. So that's eight point three point three, and uh, I think with some creativity, eight point three multifamily, that multifamily regulation can be used to uh, open up the bylaw to consider uh, cottage court or clustered-style housing developments. Because as, as Pedro and I sort of, well, as Pedro brought up to me, you know, the open space residential development bylaw has been used really only once and maybe it isn't that effective, the per is rarely used and maybe that is also not the most effective way. So maybe eight point three can be a way to uh, encourage that sort of um, tight neighborhood development, even a movable height tiny house or other cottage development.
So the, so the um, twenty-five-hundred square feet per unit uh, effectively would prohibit anyone in the B-three, in the component lot in the B-three from building what, an ADU plus a two-family or?
I, I have to go.
Or a three-family, for sure.
Right, we need to see how, how the uses that we're now looking to allow.
Yeah.
Three-family.
But we have, we have.
Et cetera.
We have setbacks and we have lot coverage.
Right.
I don't know why we need anything in addition to that.
Right, so that's, that's the discussion.
Yeah.
Um, you know, lot coverage maximums are meant to set.
Density.
Density of, you know, where you don't have a house that hopefully is open space.
Yeah.
This requirement right now is for permeable open space, so maybe that's worth thinking about um, retaining, or maybe if we look at uh, the performance standards section, overall, we can talk about the quality of the open space, what kind of open space do we really want? Um, so.
It seems like, it seems like multifamily dwellings is not where we are going to be building open space. And maybe it's just misdirected.
Um, some other things to talk about, concrete living arrangements. Um, Pedro has talked about the international building code, uh, definition for this. Um, and my thinking was that possibly similar to what we did with the nursing home conversion bylaw, uh, maybe we have some allowance for hotels or hotels to be converted uh, to a multifamily dwelling or kind of yet living situation. And then finally was this uh, idea that we talked again about last week, lodging houses and tourist homes. And um, I, I'm not sure what the boards hang up with that is, I, I need to be clear there again, but we, we get back to that. So, should we start with Stockbridge Road?
Sure.
Hmm, just jump right in.
Yeah, and are you of the opinion, Chris, that of all the items we talked about, Stockbridge Road is the one we pushed along the farthest? I know it's been sort of sitting on the back burner while we took care of some of the smaller items earlier this year. But we've been kind of kicking this one around for three years. And I think if we were looking for a bigger um, zoning amendment for this upcoming town meeting, this is the one I thought we would be pushing forward. So I just would like to get a sense of if you think we're close, given that it's October twenty-seventh.
Well, we've done a lot of work on it.
Yeah.
Do I think it's the furthest forward? I, I don't, I don't know exactly.
Okay.
Um, but we have, we have done a good bit of work. If we do decide to move it forward, it will take a lot of community engagement to uh, you know, get this out so that, in a way that people can understand it. Uh, because it is new and would allow some significant development on some parcels. So if the board decides to move forward with this, we'll have to put together a community engagement discussion uh, strategy.
Um, yes, and I thought we did already go through the exercise of looking at parcels and where this would apply.
We did, we tested these ideas on a few parcels on Stockbridge Road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, not because we thought it would be great there, we just selected some parcels that might be representative. And they included the Cove, they included where the old Wonderful Things store was on the corner of Fairview Terrace and Stockbridge Road.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, and there were a few parcels, I think the maybe, there were a few parcels on both sides of Stockbridge Road between, say, Ford Brothers and uh, McDonald's that we tested. You know, to, and we showed diagrams of what a build-out on that site might look like in terms of number of units, number of floors, number of parking spaces.
Are you able to share on screen the scenarios document that shows that?
Sure.
And I thought, I thought that packet of information had the whole anticipated area for the B-two X, but I don't think it does, I think it's just a study parcel.
Yeah, we just studied certain parcels.
Well, I think that, though, that if we, I don't know that we've ever had a discussion on B-two X here. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that this study is just to see how those incentives would play out.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
On some of the.
It was like a density test.
Some of the larger lots.
It was a mix of science, because that Wonderful Things lot is small.
So, I don't know, so they even talked about B-two X here, but.
I think it was based on this B-two X revision with the incentives built in, I think that's what we tested.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we spent a year tinkering around the language and then we said we need to test this because if we're going to add extra height or extra density, I, I remember my concern was just how it plays against the adjacent residential zone, you know, as far as kind of imposing a massive structure, like against the neighborhood that is, you know, one parcel beyond um, the intersection with, with the highway, so uh.
I, I want to make an observation just about the market and development in general right now. Uh, we all know the construction costs are extraordinarily high and they may well stay there. Mortgage rates are seven percent already, and finally, so we're sort of a new financial, well, it's not a new financial reality, but it's one we haven't dealt with in, in a little while. And that definitely impacts what development might look like in the near term and may in, in the longer term. But if, if, uh, if anything, it makes this work more important than ever, because what pencils out for a developer on a strip of commercial, uh, commercial corridor like Stockbridge Road is a typical box-style national chain that can go up quickly and easily and serve a national tenant that's bankable. And so if we want that, that's great. That could work any day of the week, even in this market, even in Berkshire County. But if that's not what we want on Stockbridge Road, if we want mixed-use development with housing opportunity on Stockbridge Road, it's likely that density would have to increase a fair bit and height, because at a two-story building, I think we can go into, there's two stories or three stories in the B-two, I think it's three. Three-story building on some of the parcels won't, won't be feasible financially, at least in the market that we're dealing with now, in terms of construction costs and financing rates. So just having that in your head, I think is important.
I think too, just as a, as an aside and as something else, just to kind of ponder, you know, the, and you, I hope you weigh in on what I'm about to say, because to me, that corridor is a sort of relic of twentieth-century development. It really has no walking presence, it has no uh, no residential life or activity and it's set up perfectly to be a continuation, in my opinion, of mainstream, just a different part of town. So it really is, and it's right thing, I think, for redevelopment, has all the necessary infrastructure in place and it's got plenty of line that's already been developed, which is, I think, the kind of parcels that we want to target and the type of places where we want development to happen.
And it's on public transit and it's walkable services, and so there's a lot of option.
It's perfect, it's set up perfectly. Been to, to really.
Look at the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, you left out the people trying to cross uh, Stockbridge Road, but you know, a lot of work to be done there.
Yeah, but you know, with, with density comes those things, right? When you add people, when people, more people are on the road, you'll have slower traffic.
Yeah, I, I'm, just case.
It's, it's a, it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a problem, it's a thing, I, you know, the walkability there, but thinking, you know, you got to put people there to use the, the walkable space and make it work. I think it's a perfect place.
The new sidewalk is helping there. I mean, even my own kid, we live by the hospital, he walked to the community center the other day.
Yeah.
And was able to stay on the sidewalk the whole way and that's a big improvement, that it's like, that it now improved. And I see a lot of people walking there.
You could.
We walk that time all the time.
You.
Go ahead, Jeremy, I should have watched, waved your arm.
I don't know, you could always uh, walk that, I mean, it's improved, I think, especially for accessibility, because it's a nice smooth sidewalk now, but there was always, I mean, they just replaced the sidewalk that was there. I mean, the addition that we, that, the addition that was done to connect um, uh, the rest from Chrissy Road to CHP, uh, CHP, I mean, that was the real thing. But everything else was already connected, it was just old. And I think one of the things that happened when they did that, I mean, it was nice and quick, but they took out a bunch of trees, which is shade along the way, to be able to rest and cool off if, and so we lost some of that, and I think that was unfortunate.
Those, those trees that were ashes, that were dead.
Yeah.
I know, but there was no, but there was nothing in place, and I, I realize it's the state and so we don't have anything, but we don't have anything really in place when that type of work's being done to provide for replacements of the trees unless it's going to be, you know, I don't know, the town doing it.
I want to add two more things that I should have added when I was talking about development costs and feasibility, uh, uh, and housing, actually. Uh, part of, part of the housing work, Malcolm, uh, back to your original point and for everybody, is um, to get a tally on how much housing has been built recently, in what forms, in what sizes, at what price points, and compile what is permitted and planned and possible moving forward over the next two, three, four, or five years. So that's something that we're doing now on staff. Um, and that plays into what we're talking about on Stockbridge Road. Uh, what is the need, you know, we've got the housing need study, we know that at certain affordability levels, there is more need than others, de- definitely at the lower income end and kind of the moderate income end. But I think the need is present at all levels, including up to like a hundred percent of their immediate income at least. Anyway, so what's being built, what will be built, what are the needs, et cetera? So those are all things to think about. And the other thing I want to talk about in terms of feasibility and cost is that redevelopment in particular is, is extremely expensive right now of older buildings that don't have, uh, don't come up to current building and energy levels. And I think we all have seen that as well, so the, the costs are just tremendous. So, that's the, sort of the, the world that we're in.
So the bottom line is the builders are only going to build things if they can make money on it and they can only make money if they have a lot of, well, units.
Or.
Well, that's one way, or they have a lot of grant money.
Or subsidy, or units.
And, and I think when we had the folks from Windrush Commons present to us, we asked them all those questions and I think the um, state threshold for funding is thirty-two or thirty-three units minimum.
Depends on the program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Was, Chris, is part of that request about um, going to include, like, uh, per-unit costs of all of that? And, and where I'm coming from is um, just so that. Um, just so we're aware of like how much, how much funding might be necessary um, like for creation of um, like affordable or workforce.
That's not a bad point, I haven't done that and I don't know if we can, but thank you, drive.
So in terms of Stockbridge Road zoning, B-two X, that's, we can spiral out of control on our board and have long philosophical discussions. Um.
All right, so I'll share the screen.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, so on screen, so these are the parcels that we tested. That something just pops.
I think it, Jeremy bumped his phone.
Oh, uh, these are the parcels we tested on Stockbridge Road with this B-two X incentive zone. Again, they were just parcels we chose. This is the, I think this is the Napa Auto with the self-storage in back. Uh, the Cove Lanes with the adjacent antique store and the Shiro Japanese. So those are all on the west side of Stockbridge Road. On the east side, Stockbridge Road was right, right near Goodwill, we only tested one of the parcels because Goodwill Old Sears sort of absorbed the parcel immediately north, which is parking lot now. Um, and we tested, I believe this is a one or a two-family home on the corner of Stockbridge Road and Blue Hill Road. So this is what we found, um, so this is the, the Shiro Antiques and Cove Bowling Site.
And the interesting thing there is, is that in the tally that we had been given from the R P C that it totals like six or seven acres, but a lot of it is resource-protected, so there's only about an acre and a half that's available.
Yeah, um, the diagrams that I'll show you are oriented in the same way as, as these photos. So Stockbridge Road is on the right side of the diagram, in this case, so Stockbridge Road is, is here on the right side of the diagram. So this is assuming, under the B-two X zone, that the building is brought very close to the street. So this includes the entire Cove parcel, um, and I believe all the way down to uh, the Burger King, the um, Shiro, sorry. I, I wasn't even living here when it was Burger King, it's still called Burger. Uh, this, uh, now remember, it's a three-story zoning now. This development showed it as a four-story development, twenty units per floor at about a thousand square feet per unit. And this is, it's a lot of parking, hundred and seventy-five spaces.
Way too much parking.
Lot of parking. Uh, it did include, I guess, retail in the front, so this was a mixed-use situation.
I think if you scroll up, it says five-story.
Oh, right, so it was a first floor, I guess, of retail and five, four floors on top of that, of residential.
Right, and, and that is one of the incentives that's in the B-two.
That's, that's what drove the parking account here, I think, was um, was the uh, was the retail, I think. So that, that was one just scenario, um.
You're basically, he's dealing with properties that are in three different ownerships too, which is a little tricky.
Um, yeah, although now the Cove and the Antique Center are back in one ownership.
Yeah, the Cove and Red Dawn spoke.
That were, these things been gone. Okay, so that that was one scenario for, this is a different scenario. I'm not sure how I did, but I have to go back and maybe this was just this was just housing, I think.
Yeah, I think that's right. Five floors, one hundred units of housing, ten units of affordable. Less parking or green space, but not mixed use.
And the the idea was really to to test where we where our draft had ended up, and so we could see if somebody assembled parcels and this was a buy-right situation, which was the idea under the current draft. What what would be achieved? So this was just to give us that idea. Okay, we can look at some other. I think this was just the Cove on its own. And I can email these around again, I wasn't totally prepared to work them through. So this was a mixed use, just on the Cove site.
Right, right, Cove on its own, mixed use, still, it's still uh fifty-six units. Still has a affordability component.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
This is this, this is the same one that you emailed last week. Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
I I'm showing on screen, not everybody has it in the public.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so that was the Cove site on its own. Uh this is still the Cove site as well, it shows two buildings. Seventy-five units. Two buildings, five quarters each, eight of four units. Alright, so directly across the street now. This is the residential building on the corner of Stockbridge Road and Blue Hill Road. And the diagram on the next page is gonna be oriented the same way as this parcel is, so Stockbridge Road will be on the top of the screen. And Blue Hill Road on the left of the screen. So a hundred fifty feet of frontage here on Stockbridge Road. Building close to the street, parking behind. And quite a bit of parking.
Quite a bit of curb cut on Blue Hill Road though.
Lot of curb cut, yeah, I mean, in order to make all that parking work in the back, you have to um that was a mixed-use scenario.
So Chris, you can do that kind of parking?
This is not, you know, engineered, I this is just this is mocked up in grid format in Microsoft Excel. Not, you know, it's it's scaled, it's just dimensioned.
Diagrammatic, Jeremy, not just something, yeah.
So, but it 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 shows you approximately what could be achieved.
So that one was three stories, ten units per floor, a thousand square feet per unit, so thirty units.
And typically, in any of these scenarios, if you push the density up much more, you just can't achieve it. The parking tends to control it. Because you just can't get the parking to meet the parking demand.
Wouldn't we have enough space requirements here too? That would not make this develop as big as it is.
I'm pretty sure we included the setbacks where we had to.
Are you looking at the note at the top that says Route Seven Buffer?
No, I'm thinking about that. I I don't know if that was by or not, I think we were considering this on its own as a mixed use that wouldn't be subject to that. Guess I'm looking at this multi-family one, does most, does eight point three? There's a preface eight point three, I think, that says this shall not apply in certain zones. And I think we excluded
I think that's something to look.
I think we exclude the MXD B two X. HVC, some other things, anyway. It's another preface that say, what'd you say, is it at the end of the session?
Uh, if you want.
Yeah, eight point three point six are exemptions, oh, thanks. Um let's see, we can move up to the Napa Auto site with the self-storage in back. Again, Stockbridge Road is gonna be on the right of the diagram. Stockbridge Road is over here on the road, this is a really strange site. So to lay it out in terms of, you know, to meet the setbacks and everything, it's a little fun, but you can achieve five floors of housing towards the back, sixty units back there. Chris, that exemption only applies to existing buildings. And and the exemption is for eight point three three, or is it a parking? It's right, it's not the open space, right?
Yeah, no, no, that's something I'll go look at.
So we need eight point three point seven. This was another for for um two twenty-seven Stockbridge Road. So it it took the retail out, the first scenario kept the retail up front, this one takes the retail out.
Which one is this one, oh, this is the
North of the Cove, yeah, like between the Cove and the yeah, gas station, there's a gas station.
Yeah, it's either the gas station.
And then, I have to say, if you if you take out storage units, that's gonna be a very tough sell.
Yeah. What do we do with all this stuff?
And more storage units are going vertical, so you could put them vertical and then have units, right?
What is it, is, t- does anyone have any ideas of like um not in lieu of parking, but like alternative parking structures rather than just flat parking and like feasibility of that? I know aesthetically.
Parking garage?
Well, yeah, well, I'm wondering if there's like new-fangled parking garages that don't look anything like old parking garages.
There are, just Google it.
There definitely are, but they're very expensive, Jeremy.
That's, that's what I'm wondering.
They're like forty thousand dollars of space.
A space?
That's a basic garage.
Yeah.
Forty thousand per space.
And so what are, and what is the comparable when you have uh space for, what does a parking space cost? Um for just a flat parking space like this, if, do we have that number too?
Yeah, I
It's very, it's very low?
Much.
Okay.
The the last site we tested was where the old wonderful, wonderful thing was on the corner of Fairview and and this, this one got constrained pretty quickly by the parking, I think, if I remember right. So Stockbridge Road, the top of your picture, sixty-two feet of frontage, Fairview Terrace on the right.
It's
Could only achieve ten year, I think the park, the parking got really tight really quickly. And that constrained the density on this site, it's such a small site.
Is this site in common ownership with the three sites of um Goodwill?
Yes. I don't know if it's technically in common, but
same interest, Craig, Craig Barnum is involved in all three of them, so I don't know.
Same interest is a good way to describe it. Uh okay, so it's a quick review.
Yep, thank you.
So in some areas, the development could be but you could could achieve, but a great number of units taken together is pretty intense.
But that last one you were showing had setbacks. And I thought the B two X doesn't have wouldn't have setback requirements.
It uh can you pull the language up, did you have that from that email you sent us, Tom? I think we were, we, so if I recall, it's been a long time, but if I recall, we wanted some setbacks against the residential zone. It it different than the current B two X.
Well, this is setbacks on the street, from the side, side and and front.
The uh but there was, there was a Route Seven Buffer. I think.
I think he's talking about the um the side, the side setbacks, the Fairview Terrace setback and then the two um the uh side setback to the the other property between Goodwill and and this property. Was that right, Jonathan?
So the B two X has yeah, has zero front side rear, yeah. Well, you know, the maximum is five. Yeah, okay, so
So B two X, the maximum is four. The configured building looks a little differently.
I I guess, you know, try not to get too far into the weeds tonight. How how do we wanna proceed from here? Should we refine this language? We've already identified a number of conflicts or concerns with existing language. You said something that we should
Yeah, you sent us a document uh that's uh the draft amendments for discussion.
Yeah.
Is that this?
No.
Does that encompass this?
Nine point one four, yeah, you did include it.
Draft amendments for discussion, that's what we discussed in August.
Okay. But it does not include the Stockbridge Road.
Correct, the email, the email includes this uh GTV Stockbridge Road.
Oh, okay, the GTV B two X.
And the language for the zoning is what we had worked up some time ago prior to the studies being done.
Right.
Nine point one four State Road makes you B two X.
So I can put that on the screen.
So if I can just say one thing, with, what we're talking about here is basically B two. Only little difference there would be in setbacks. But that, the only thing that that does is change the sort of design of the lots. It doesn't change the density of the lots, unless we add these incentives. So I think what what we should discuss is whether or not we want to add these incentives. Whether or not it makes sense to do four stories there, or even five, as proposed here by the RPC. And to decide what gets incentivized. Are those in this uh draft, the incentives?
Yes. So I think it's under uh nine point one, four point four.
The other thing the B two X does bigger is it um gives some parking.
Right.
Sure, but we can incentivize that. So wh- what's the story of development that's appropriate? In terms of massing, in terms of where it is on the lot, in terms of uses. And what are the uses you wanna incentivize and at how much?
So originally, I proposed to incentivize affordable housing, senior housing and and childcare.
Right, which I think are all fine. I think all of those are good things that are missing in our community that we're looking to create more of, right? I think my, I'm I'm generally okay with this concept from my perspective. Um five stories does concern me, cause that is a very tall structure in an area where there's not historically been that pattern of development. Um and I think we need to think hard about what the imposition of that will be and whether or not the community is willing to accept that. We understand rationally that, you know, we're trying to maybe drive down the per-unit cost by allowing additional stories. Um but it it may create like um some concern in the community about the size of that structure. And, you know, Malcolm, maybe you have some insight, but I'm more concerned with it on the east side of the road than on the west side of the road. Because the west side is backed up to resource areas that, you know, the ducks aren't gonna complain.
I mean, yeah, five-story building um on Stockbridge Road is a big, with zero setback, is a big building. How 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 wide is the right-of-way there, I mean, in terms of I think it's pretty wide, isn't it?
It's wide, it probably goes, so there's utility pools on the west side. So from the west side, the back of the utility wall, probably to about the back of the sidewalk on the east side, it's pretty wide. It's not wide enough to add a bunch of bike lanes in proportion, but we'll see what DOT is looking at for improvement.
But I think that's what we'd have to look at, I mean, is, you know, what does zero setback mean on Stockbridge Road? Where where would a five-story or even a four-story building be located um in relation to the the street and the sidewalk? Uh and related to other buildings, what's it gonna look like there, is it, you know, is it gonna look like a patchwork? With the big building and all these other buildings that are still set back, or is it, well, initially, I don't know, yeah, but if it's actually just built down, it'll feel more, much more like down-down.
Yeah.
Speak to the owl.
Sorry.
So I'm not, uh I mean, I I think Stockbridge Road is is an ideal location for increased density in these towns. Let let me say that, uh and I think it's a good idea. Uh I think we should, you know, take a look at that and say, and what, you know, if these areas will build out, what's it gonna look like? And maybe we can sketch something out.
And I think, and I think the sell is to loop back to what Chris said, so now you can build but, you know, if you get together enough pieces of property, you can build big box stores. But, you know, if we want something
You can build basic box.
Well, basic, I can't, I'm sorry, basic box stores. Um and um you know, so that versus something else. I mean, I think we always, and so, you know, I I think part of it is asking the town, you know, so if we really want more housing, you know, what do we have to give up for it, you know, and so, you know, are there places where it really makes sense? And so I think just selling that this is one of those places where it makes sense. But, you know, I mean, but I don't know if you can sugarcoat it that there's not gonna be there's not gonna be some cost to it. Um but I think the sell is that, you know, this is one of the ways that you can get more housing. And it it does make sense in this kind of corridor. And so, yes, it's gonna change, it's gonna change the neighborhood. But, you know, I mean, the neighborhood goes back, back uh fairly far and and certain places and you know, it's it's only gonna be close to the road or close to Stockbridge Road that this is really gonna change.
And and having all the parking behind.
Yeah, it gives you Yeah, it gives you that buffer.
On the east side, I agree with that, yeah, I agree, you know, I think we have to be careful about lighting and making sure and the other thing to Jeremy's point about the sidewalk job, removing those dead ash trees is the thing we've liked about uh MXD and Route Seven is the mature vegetation that's there and you know, in our lifetime, there won't be mature vegetation in the Stockbridge Road corridor, with the exception of that sycamore tree. But we can, we could set it up such that, you know, our grandkids can have
Do you need, do you need to spot-zone a buffer around that sycamore tree? So you don't get a, some huge building right next to it?
Uh getting back to this uh uh proposed amendment, I I I don't see the incentives in here, except uh structures containing ten or more residential units. So uh I think that's gonna have to be fleshed So uh I think that's going to have to be fleshed out if it's not here, I don't, I don't see it in another point fourteen.
Chris, Chris has it somewhere, not like that kind.
Well, we certainly talked about it enough, but I think it it should be easy to come together with, but it's. You know, in terms of what needs to be done.
There's one thing I like to maybe uh ask pretty considers. What I like about the B two X most of all is that it really is the closest. Of any of our regulations that we have to duplicate in what's in our downtown. So if you think about about the possibility of creating something like what we have here. Somewhere else. You know, that might help you kind of envision what the possibilities could be like. At least maybe from a selling point of view, you need that as well.
Yeah.
Well, the the downtown has an historic. Uh character, historical character to it that, you know, I don't think the B two X will ever have.
When it was built, that wasn't historic.
It was uh replacing the similar building when we burned it down in a series of fires, I mean, it was, you know, I mean, it's downtown. Uh and I don't think Stockbridge Road has ever been down.
I'm not saying that we're going to have a bunch of brick buildings or a bunch of ornate newer Renaissance buildings there. But we'll have a an urban sort of agglomeration of construction and development there. That will allow the same type of activity that we have. That's kind of what I'm kind of getting at.
So I guess for this group then, you know, we need to bring the incentive conversation back into the Jack language that we've got. Do, I know it's a touchy subject, we're going to throw it out there anyway, do we um want any sort of design standards? Or. You know, materiality selection. I I have to be honest, I don't love the architecture Windrush Commons, I really would not want to see that on Stafford Road. That's my opinion.
I don't think that's what you're going to be seeing on Stocker Drill because the density is much different.
Have you been to Alden lately? There's a huge housing development that is like all this like brightly colored panelized with lights. Very similar, I don't know if that's like a, is that an architectural style that people are emulating these things like bright. White stripes of trim.
No, that's like the roadside.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I'd be bored, you know, putting band on that kind of architecture too, but I just don't know that that's. It's a good thing to to have, um how do you regulate?
Aesthetic, right, right, we're, we're not a museum, but I know this board feels strongly about aesthetics. But we also feel strongly that they're interpretive, so, but the question is, do we need any design guidelines of any sort? Well, since. Prisect glazing or. Colors or. You want to sleep on it?
No. Uh we're saying it's by right. And so that means anybody, I mean, they build. Ten or more units by right, maybe these courses, no matter what it looks like or no matter how. You know, what kind of construction is being reused.
Well, Windrush Commons has not, is not mixed use. That's strictly residential. And so. If you, if you have something that's mixed use, it's going to be much different. And also, if you have to build. On the street, that's going to be much different.
But this this requirement isn't for mixed use, it's for residential.
It could be either, right?
Yeah, but it's by right.
I mean, did you have a question? Are we mumbling? I mean, you should be.
Sorry, uh my cat did it. No, no, the cat really did. No kidding.
Just picture this, I have a chair. Five was sitting in a room trying to look at the side, what is aesthetically right for Stockbridge Road.
Given what's there, yeah, define the character of Stockbridge Road.
No, no, I'm not saying given what's there, I'm just saying in general, develop the set of good design standards. The five of us sit in a room talking about.
I.
Jonathan would retire for the plane.
So ten is definitely correct, I think if we can just bring the incentive language back in for that, then we're, we're probably.
Or you shouldn't make it zoning, you should make it town code, so everyone has to change it when you change your mind. Get your nice uniform thing going.
So I'll bring the incentive language back in, there are some concerns about big buildings close to the road. Might want to think about that setbacks. Depending on the height of the building and mixed use, whether mixed use is required or not, whether mixed use is required or not, maybe that's too much, but. We can discuss all of this.
But part of it, part of the big bu- buildings close to the road is what you're trying for, right? I mean, that's kind of the point, I think what Pedro is talking about. Calms traffic, it creates that corridor, that's kind of the the point.
Yeah, yeah, and but there are. There are ways to have. A big building that has landscaping in front of it that. Masks the the big bulk of the building that reduces the mass on Main Street. In downtown, well, it's a wide street, so it's tough to. But when the trees were big, you hardly noticed the mass of the buildings. When the, then when those pairs were removed, oh my gosh, three beautiful three story buildings here. So the landscape, my point is the landscaping. Can do a lot, so if there's some required buffer. On bigger buildings that can do a lot to. And and make you feel like the street is a, is a different environment, a calmer environment.
But that's a case where we either need design standards or we have to have some kind of review.
Right.
Or it gets approved or else.
Or maybe we keep the Route Seven landscape requirement, like you can't waive that. Because, I mean, not only is the benefit of having that landscape buffer. Aesthetically pleasing, but there are really compelling environmental reasons for it too, in terms of needing resilience fee and cooling and.
Yeah, but how, but how do you have that if you have zero setback? For the buildings.
I I think that, I think we're going to have to.
Yeah.
Figure that out, you know, push the building back a little bit, allow for. You know.
So what is the, so what it, what is, what about landscaping in the right away?
Well, there's that Route Seven landscape corridor, like.
What about your bike lanes, Jerry?
Is. The question is, is there tension between the Route Seven landscape corridor and a zero front yard setback? Like, are those two incompatible? And if we want both, can that happen? I don't know. But Pedro, remind me. Didn't we come up with zero front yard setback for B two X? Because there's already like patterns of that in the lower section of the B two X. Which there isn't in the Stafford Road section, right? I can't think of any.
Yeah, there's a few buildings that are historic and are pretty close, like the Jennifer House Commons. Um, there's a couple buildings that are.
That are close.
Marketplace kitchen, isn't, I mean, because I think this, the uh. Uh the right away is so wide there, I don't think they have a lot of.
But not not quite as close as.
It's not zero.
Maybe we can look at some aerial imagery of the corridor. Confirm the extent of where the B two X would be.
How is that we can get into three dimensional building envelopes where we can have wedding cake buildings?
I love that idea, I don't know if we have enough space though.
Or developers could contribute to a landscape fund.
Or a street tree fund.
Or or whatever, and you could plant those on my lots too.
Or you could plant them there.
In the right way, in the right way, it's a different thing.
Um, eh, okay, so then incentives and um and then. We need to probably look at the root seven landscape requirements.
Yeah. So planting. That, that's, that's where I was going is planting in the right away, is that only the state can do that?
I, no, I think the. We couldn't have that conversation with the state, I don't think it's.
And and then would it be the town and not the landowners?
The the problem with the right way is Stockbridge Road on the west side is there are pretty big power lines there.
Yeah.
Or you gotta put the trees behind the power. Yeah, for. I'll write that grant now.
You could put it. You could do. Crab apples and oaklarns and small trees.
They won't do much to minimize the.
They won't, but they create like, like at human scale, that tree that. Yeah, and so. They'll, and they'll shape the sidewalk and they'll shape them, so I mean, that that's an option, but, yeah, let's look at some aerial imagery next time, sound good? Chris, thank you.
Okay, great.
We could have uh trees in the middle of the road in that nice turning lane.
General, so to. To be continued. Uh maybe next time, well, the next time we have an hearing about uh Baron Two Book. Maybe at the special November meeting.
Are we moving into town financial part?
No.
Oh, you want to go.
Did you want to talk about eight point three?
Yes, absolutely, I thought you were migrating.
General area, no, no, I was just thinking of when we could continue Stocker Drive and I. Remembered that next time we.
Yeah, that's fine.
So the idea. In looking at eight point three is, you know, here we have this general regulation for multi family dwellings. Is it? Really producing the housing opportunities that we want to see, or is it artificially constrained? And so some of the places to look at that are. Land area required per unit, fifty percent requirement of permeable open space.
Right.
You could consider by right approvals, if affordable housing was included, you could consider lowering parking requirement. At least in certain zones. Um and consider how this. Might allow for a multi building, multi family development.
I I have a question um. Just about. In in where we're putting in incentives for affordable housing. And and like this where um. Uh and talking about um making by right for affordable housing. Do, I I know for funding, it's very distinct, but in terms of what we're doing with the town. Do we want to open it up more? Than what's traditionally considered affordable housing and raise the A M I? So, I mean, we can say affordable housing and something else, but. Do we want to incentivize, you know, I mean, I guess workforce housing, like raising it to a hundred and whatever?
Oh, so, wait a minute, are you getting ahead of us, because we're talking multi family?
No, 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 but so in multi family, we're talking about one of the things uh making it by right if it includes, you know, some portion of affordable housing. And so in that discussion, I think just in general, when we're in terms of zoning and incentivizing things. Do we want to increase it to be affordable housing and some sort of capped A M I? Um um workforce housing.
So broaden the.
Broaden, broaden the, broaden, broaden the A M I or raise the A M I limit, I should say.
Okay, no, that's an interesting suggestion. Um.
Chris, can I ask you to explain like number E? How, how this would create that kind of style? Multi building, multi family. Project. Where were you thinking?
Where are you?
E.
E? E what, we're, we're.
So, first of all, revising the dwelling definition takes away the. Each unit has its own housekeeping. So that plus revising eight three, where was I going with this?
Well, in the meantime, maybe we can discuss that fifty percent permeable open space requirement.
I love that.
That should go away.
Why? Convince me.
Fifty percent of the lot. Half of it. You've already got setbacks, they're making a portion of a lot on building, and now you're making fifty percent of what. Would be potentially buildable and double, yeah.
Isn't the uh fifty percent including setbacks?
It does, includes lawns or garden areas, exclusive structures, driveways, walkways and parking spaces. I I would be open to modifying it, but I. Would not be open to removing it entirely.
Why?
Because green spaces are essential, given the rainfall patterns that we're having now. And the fact that our storm sewers were installed fifty to seventy five years ago and are undersized. For the rain we're getting already, and so we experience a lot of local flooding. And we need to be able to pivot from expecting the town to handle it on a system wide basis, because they just can't. To being able to manage that stormwater on a person by person basis to help mitigate some of the impacts to the townwide system. And you can't. You can't, you can most. Inexpensively do that with green space.
But, but then you really, as we've seen, you really limit the amount of parking you can provide, limiting the number of. Dwelling units you can provide, right?
Yeah, there's trade offs everywhere that are going to have to be considered, but I think we're being short sighted in our present climate scenario.
And so, and so that's, so like, so it's expensive, right, to, but. Is it expensive and still, do do the numbers still work to have some other way to deal with water on the site? Um with less green space, because I mean, we're specifically, we're talking about it in multi family right now, right? And. So that may, or multi unit, I guess we should, it should be changed to multi unit dwellings, right, I guess, but um. Yeah, I mean, if it's fifty percent, you know, unless you have a lot, a big lot, you know, what are you really going to get? Are we just talking about four units, five units, you know? And then do the numbers work, you know, is anybody going to be able to develop that? So.
Driveways, walkways and parking spaces.
Yeah, I was wondering, we we say they're permeable, permeable driveways, permeable.
So is that the, is that the key to just make, to just make all of that permeable? Like you have to make permeable.
You wouldn't have to, only if you wouldn't meet the fifty percent required.
Okay.
So if you're having trouble meeting a fifty cent percent requirement, you can choose to use permeable materials for your driveways.
I think that helps. I think that helps, I mean, the reality is that.
I know, and that's, and that's, yeah.
On row and um then to vacuum permeable paper. Um, yeah, I don't know. I mean, should multi family only occur if we're like assessing that you need to have. Twelve, twenty, thirty units to make it. Uh economically viable. Does it need to have a minimum lot size instead and then throw out the per unit? Lot area requirement? More like. The purge, right?
But I think it's, you know, um, I mean, it has a lot to do with um the. The unit, um, the unit size, right, and so. You know, a lot of the mockups were all thousand square foot units. Um, but.
That wouldn't apply, the B two X wouldn't apply, this, this.
No, 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 but but I'm, I'm just, what I'm just saying in in terms of like space, right? Um. You, so you're providing, you're, so you're sort of determining the, by that, you're sort of determining the size of the units, right? So you're, you're, in a sense, you're capping the unit size. If you say that the property has to be a certain size for. Um, a certain number of units, right? Isn't that effectively what you're doing?
A floor in the number of units.
Yeah, that's what it's doing. It's just it tends to it tends to be. So he, I mean, his point is exactly right. He's right on. Isn't that what Doyle did on Doyle there? When he was figuring out his his basis, he can only do like thousands per foot of units, because there's a lot of requirement. What he wanted to do, you know, five hundred square foot units, he couldn't do it in a lot of time.
So can we back up a half a step? Where? Where do we think this multifamily dwelling is going to actually be constructed if we're already excluding? The V, the V two X, HBC and the M X D?
What? We're excluding.
Right, exemptions. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Is there's your specific. They're mainly gonna be in residential zones.
Where did we test this? Did we test this in the beacon like down between cottage and? Uh, not cottage, between church and bridge? Is that where we looked at this as an example?
No, that wasn't this.
That wasn't the scenario.
I I mean, Pedro got to it a little bit, but I think that was. If he was looking at the B three zone.
Three, yeah, I was looking there, I was in space requirement and the parking requirements. You know, if you think we have a building envelope that we can build on a site. And this requirement limits what you can do on that side. So if you if you had, you know, whatever it is, let's make it easy, a thousand square foot lot, you don't want to give two, four units on it. And you maximize your building envelope, you're likely to get, what? Two thousand, we got one hundred square foot units, I need that.
Did you say a ten thousand square foot lot? As an example?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you just were quiet, so I'm speaking loudly.
Whereas if you had that same lot without a lot requirement, you can have units that are the size of the Coda Labs. Which, you know, for some people that might not be great, but for lots of people all over the world, that's just fine. And I think, you know, it's it's all, we end up talking a lot about, I think, this kind of smaller living. And I think that smaller type of living, like the microunit and. The tiny house and this and the other thing and the congregant living. It it attracts a certain type of population that I think the town could benefit from tremendously, so. It's not just zoning for them, but you know, it could be. And it is something that would be targeted for them as opposed to, again, doing four units that are three thousand square foot each that you can fit on a small lot. Which wouldn't be for, you know, anybody except somebody who has some money.
Do we know why this bylaw was put in place?
This is everywhere.
I'm just, I'm like, I'm looking at our senior board member.
No, but this, I think I could. Are you asking about?
Amazing resource.
Are you asking about the lot requirement?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the Jennifer.
It's everywhere. It's this uh, one of the biggest zoning controls that zoning has across the country. Everywhere you'll find.
I know, but why did we implement it?
That's it, that's why.
Well, I think it's the same thing, yeah. It's it's.
You be satisfied just to remove eight point three point three one?
I mean, I think it would be great.
Is that really what you're guiding at?
Or or lowering it to five, five hundred square feet per unit.
I mean, that's, i- if if I was hearing you and Jonathan talk earlier. The the commentary was, we already have coverage and tapback requirements, just let those govern. So why would we have anything at all?
Right, figure moving. This this is, this is where I was going with the kind of living. Eliminating or reducing the lot area per unit would allow for these different.
But I think the point of why this is in place everywhere is because you're trying to keep out those people. And I know it's never presented in that way, but that's what it's really about. You know, and not everyone that enacts this understands that, but. But because it is, it is a certain kind of, it is a certain kind of people that wanna live, you know, or that. Can afford or that can only afford to live in, you know. Uh, you dwelling units of that size. And so, you know, I mean, some people choose it, but.
Well, I think this is something that. Need to think about more either. We should test on, you know, sketch it up, Jonathan, and you have time to sketch up a lot and figure out how much the setbacks are in terms of open space.
Already have those.
I I think eliminating eight three three, number one is. A very, very good start, because setbacks, parking and those things are already controlling what you think. Right, there there's already dimensional controls, right? Um, looking at the permeable open space requirement is something I think you should think about. Brandon's argument is a really, really good one. Maybe we care about the quality of that open space, what's in the open space, you know? Compact and check doesn't do anything, but lots of wonderful white oaks could be great. So maybe the quality of the open space. What about parking? This currently requires one and a half spaces and a special permit to reduce one and a half space to per unit.
And it doesn't do that, though, in the B V two X H C C.
Right.
M X D, it doesn't do it there.
Which is good.
What? It doesn't do what?
Doesn't, you you don't have the parking requirement.
Well, that's and that's also to John's point, that's in an existing building.
So, no, that's that's fair. We may want to in a single building, right? In a single existing building, it's like a retrofit.
Yeah.
Yeah, an adaptive reuse.
Well, what would be the effect of um, with um, parking requirements? Um. Tying them to dwelling unit size in some fashion.
Per bedroom or per square foot?
Um, yeah, I yeah, dwelling unit square foot size. So like, if dwelling units are under a certain square footage. Then a certain parking rate, a lower parking rate, or and then above, you know, within the different range. Because, you know, I mean, in a sense, the unit size should should also somewhat determine. The number of people that could live in that unit. And so if you have a small unit, do you really need one and a half spaces for that unit?
I don't think that's a good way to do it, though.
No, no, I so I I'm just throwing it out there. I'm wondering what the consequence, what the consequence of something like that is.
First of all, you know, you'll get families of five people living in one, in a one-room apartment. And you'll get one person living in a three thousand square foot house, so.
But but I think that in general, the five people living in that one room, are they really gonna have five cars?
I mean, are they gonna have any cars? I mean, let's look at this. Uh, here's another way to look at it, Jeremy. Um, if if you can't afford as that much housing. Maybe both people have to work and need cars, whereas if you have a big house, where only one person works and they may need a car. So I mean, you know, the number of cars may not be.
Yeah, I I know, but I mean, Brandy always brings it up that we are really a car society, and I'm trying to think of like. You know, I mean, I know there's a lot, we have a lot of service workers in town. You know, and a lot of them living in small spaces, none of which have cars, or maybe they have one car between a lot of them, but. You know, you know, where are, where is the housing for them and are we, you know, and so. I'm I'm trying to think of like, what's the creative way that you can get less parking in our current society? And so I I don't know, I anyway.
The way to do it is don't build it.
Sorry?
The way to do it is don't build it.
So so, okay, so for Chris, so eight point three point three, it sounds like we probably wanna do away with one. And think about modifications to two and three, right? And then we want to potentially modify. Eight point three point six for new construction as well as existing construction?
Well, eight point three point six, we just use with parking.
Right, but do we want it to apply to more than existing buildings?
What, why do you say eight point three point six is all about parking? It's also about.
Point eight point three point three.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the whole, I'm sorry, it's the whole line, my 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 fault. I was thinking about eight point three point three. I was adding another three.
Is that is that something we want to 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 apply to new development as well as existing adaptive reuse development?
So what this says, if it's new development. Even in the B two X, HBC and DX, in general, B two districts, still has to apply to this. Even for new development in those zones.
Right.
But it doesn't apply to. Existing buildings in those zones, but it does apply to existing buildings in other zones. Right, why does that work? How does that make sense?
Yeah. I don't know, I think we need to modify it, though.
I think we need to take it.
So I asked this, is there an appetite for waving parking for any affordable units that are proposed?
Waving wall parking or no, just for humans? So those humans taken out of the parking camp. The idea there, and I heard this idea the other day, and never really thought about it or read about it. That, you know, when you're developing units, you kinda have to know, or this was a discussion by a developer who develops portable housing. And for them, the main goal of finding land, for example, is finding where there's transit. Because they know that their au- audience that they're building for. A lot of them will not, of course, not be able to afford them. So they take that idea and just say, well, the possibility here that there will be people who will be on transit, walking or whatever. And that might just make the developments a little bit lighter, because, I mean. We can all maybe hopefully agree that all the parking that we build is well put under these.
It would be interesting to have the idea of parking, like, okay, so let's say you're gonna rent an apartment. It would be int- it would be an interesting idea that, like, if you're renting a park apartment with a parking space, it's one, it costs you. You know, X plus or A plus B, but if you're renting an apartment that without a parking space, it's just A. I mean, it'd be interest, it'd be, I don't know, is anyone, I assume somebody's doing that already and. Can can developers or um, managers do that? In Massachusetts?
Yeah, you can unbundle. Actually, I tell you guys a little anecdote. In my office search, the. The Berkshire block actually unbundled their parking. But they didn't lower the price of the unit.
So now you have to pay for.
But yeah, but it's, you know, you you can rent a unit there, you can rent an office without having to take a parking.
Awesome.
So, um, I mean, the whole idea of public transit is interesting, because maybe the parking numbers could be tied somehow or another proximity to uh. Public transit. Um, but do we have reliable public transit?
Well, the thing, you know, you have to think, you know, I always like to think kind of in the future, and let's say that we do get development. I don't know, thirty years down the road, you know, and we're all gone. There might be then density enough to have robust public tran- transit system. If this type of, for example, off Safford Road, if you get enough development, that's the only way to get. You know, robust public transit is to have.
Is have people who need public transit.
Build it, if you build it, they will come.
Yeah, we're building, we just have a subway to downtown.
So, um, Chris, you have some.
There used to be a subway here that you could take the subway to the subway there. But this this station's closed.
All right, I think we've reached a limit for the eating thing. Thank you, Chris.
Please just endorse me, it's me who's bringing up this lodging home. Yeah, and maybe you can endorse it the last time, because I think what I, I don't think, I know that what I gave you last time was not as. Thought out as I wish it would have been. So I've gone back and kind of rethought everything that I would give. I can bring it up here.
Yeah, I cuz I I wasn't sure of what you wanted to do. So to begin with, Chris had brought up that lodging house has. Has a definition and it actually has laws.
Yeah.
Um. Anyway. This section twenty, so M G L one forty, section twenty-two defines a lodging house. And that is, I think, despite what other definitions that I brought in, and I don't know how this works, cuz they differ slightly. The one that we have to go by is the one that the state gives us. It says, shall mean a house where lodgings are let to four or more persons. Not within second degree of kinder to the person conducting. And shall include paternity houses and dormitories of educational institution. But shall not include dormitories of charitable or philanthropic institutions. Or convalescent or nursing homes licensed under section seventy-one, chapter one hundred and eleven. Or rest homes so licensed. Or group residences licensed or regulated by agencies of common. So that's basically what we allow. With our language.
That's our language, or that's what, because we have lodging homes in our bylaw, this is what.
That could, we have the term lodging homes in our bylaw, which we don't define, and therefore defaults to that.
Okay.
Which I don't believe we can define, because it's a law. The Massachusetts law, we can.
Well, we talked about this last year, we thought we would define lodging houses, right? Now it's not defined in our bylaw, and we thought we would define them. As tourist homes.
Mm-hmm.
And town council said, wait a minute, it's already defined somewhere else, you've got to mash those up, and that's not a good idea. So it is defined in general law and to do it otherwise would cause some confusion and conflict.
So I'll skip these other definitions, because they're not really relevant. Now I'll just go down to what I've argued something to myself here, but we have, so. Lodging house tourist homes for transient guests, and then there's borders. And those three things are the things that kind of gnaw at me. So as we just. Concluded, lodging homes are not defined in the bylaw, but we have a state definition for what that is. So we define a tourist home as any establishment renting more than three, so four. Or less than eleven, so ten, so between four and ten rooms. On a nightly basis, whether seasonally or year-round, regardless of whether meals are served, and regardless of any other designation. Such as in-country, in-bed and breakfast, in guesthouse or the like. So if we compare it to the lodging house.
What was that definition then?
Trans tourist home in our bylaw. So the tourist home allows. Four to ten rooms. Which, again, rooms is something that's not defined. Rooms can be living rooms, it's not defined as sleeping rooms, although I understand that the implication might be that it's sleeping rooms. But because it says rooms, I think that's kind of a problem. Um.
Meaning you want it to be four to ten rooms in addition to any sort of common room?
No, I don't want to do anything. I'm just saying what it is.
Okay, okay.
One interesting thing is that neither lodging homes or tourist homes that we define it. Requires that there be a permanent resident available or present. Okay. So the lodging house tourist homes are in common, they're not really in conflict, that's the wrong one. Lodging houses allow let to four or more persons, not within second year of kinship, so. Four more person, it doesn't say anything about rooms, right? Tourist home limits the number of rooms it can deliver. Accordingly, one can run to four or more persons that is limited to between four and ten rooms. Because lodging home and tourist homes are combined in a lot. Since it is like, that's an important point, I shouldn't brush over that. We've combined both of these things that are kind of not the same thing.
In seven point.
In the use table.
The use table, okay, cuz that's what I was just thinking.
Since it is likely that a home will have more. Since it is likely that a home will have more than three rooms, this seems fine, but if a home has twelve rooms, it has been a hotel. Since ru- rooms is not specific to sleeping rooms, how is that possible? That's one thing. So tourist home is another definition for short-term rental, arguably, except that it's got the room limit. But if you have a home and you have ten rooms in it, it's technically a short-term rental, can we agree to that or not? We give the definition again of a tourist home. Any establishment renting more than three or less than ten, than eleven rooms on a nightly basis, whether seasonally or year round, regardless of whether meals are served, regardless of any other designation. Such as in-country, in-bed and breakfast, in, guest house, or the like.
And the like would include short-term rooms.
You're right, I mean, there are more than three rooms. Only, if it, if it has more than eleven rooms, then it's a tourist home.
Yeah, or no, it's not, actually. But if it has more than, if it has four to ten rooms, it doesn't have four to ten bedrooms, four to ten rooms.
Exactly.
It's, it, it's a tourist.
If you're renting on a nightly basis.
Why is this not aligned? Because it's inconsistent?
Well, there's an inconsistency between the definition lodging homes and tourist homes, but lodging homes allows uh for more people, but tourist homes limits the rooms, so how do we reconcile, right? If you have ten rooms, then lodging home says you can rent to thirty people or whatever, you know, you can rent as you want. And then short-term rentals obviously fall into this, and the importance here is that tourist homes require special permits. So if you have ten rooms and you're renting seasonally or whatever, on short-term rental, I mean, this is, you know, this is codified already in our bylaws.
Where, where relative to the building code now?
The building code is, it's really just an inspection regime, and actually, they took out the, they took out the definition for from rentals.
Oh, they did?
Because they define, um, and I have, may have had it in here, or I can share with you if you'd like, in the uses, in the building code, you know, the use designation. They make, you know, it's an R one use. And, but they define it as like a single-family home that's being used to rent rooms or whatever. And R one uses a hotel. So there's sprinkler regimes and all kinds of inspection. You have to add up what the definition is, and you have to say a short-term rental is basically this, it's R one use.
But isn't, isn't seasonal rentals this as well? Does it, doesn't that make a doesn't that make a bunch of seasonal rentals not possible? Like if there, let's say there are a multifamily, let's say there are multifamily seasonal rental, you couldn't do that either. Because they, I would imagine there are more than ten rooms, and then, you know, that's a hotel. Because it, it includes seasonal, right? It's not just.
Where are we trying to go with this?
I just want to make, make an argument, I think we need to make a decision, I'm not done here with my presentation. So the lettering actually distinguishes it from a hotel, lodging house is defined, and I received that that's by the C. If we keep it in, it serves as a regulation short-term rentals.
You're gonna have to speak clearly, I mean, they're raising their hand.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's that, what I'm saying basically is that what we have as a tourist home is a regulation of short-term rental. And we in our bylaws is limited to the, to the ten-room limit. And the three and the four-room minimum. And essentially, it's a regulation of short-term rentals, I did, what I'm saying with that is that we, we have a regulation for that, I don't know if it gets, this is important to you guys, but.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, the way you're reading this, and I think it's correct, is that short-term rentals require a special permit.
Is it a, is it a, but Pedro, did you, what, or is I hearing it right, but it's for three or more? Three or more, you're renting to three or more? Right? Three or more, pe- you're renting to three or more people, right? Or how, how was the wording?
The tourist home definition doesn't mention the number of people, charming.
Oh, it's one we combined the two.
Rooms, yeah, the lodging house.
Okay, it, it's one we combined them, okay, I got it.
Limitations of borders, the renting of rooms or the furnishing of table board by a resident family to not more than three room, rumors or borders is permitted, provided that no separate cooking facility or anything.
This is our.
Yes.
This is the Terrence definitely.
That's right. So the limitation of not more than three rooms or borders, the thing is that from lodging house, because it regulates persons, not rooms. Why, this appears under accessory uses, which I assume will limit the number of borders in residential districts, however, lodging houses and tourist homes, which are allowed more than three and up to ten rooms, are allowed by special permit. But this allows the state of no more than three transient guests by right without a special permit. And my question here is, does this really need to be codable? If I, you know, if I invite my, if I have a son and he's got a wife and kid, that's three people coming to my house, like, do we really need to say that that's okay? Well, then, think, and then, if I have, if I have a, a son and daughter, if I have a son and, and he has a wife and had two kids, am I suddenly in a lodging house and I need a special permit at the house?
Yeah, because second degree.
I think.
I mean, only if the in-laws are also invited and their relatives.
If I don't, if I have, if I have, you know, friends or something, basically, if I invite four people over to my house.
I, I feel like you're like turning a hypothetical scenario into something that is not being enforced and.
But that's the whole point, why don't we have it?
Well, that, that may be a separate issue, but could you couch it in that term, like, this is superfluous because of this and this, and like, I recognize your, like.
Felt like I had to make my argument.
But I, I don't, I don't think your four friends qualify, because uh there's no rent paid. Unless you're gonna charge them rent. So I.
If, if you're using your home, and you're renting to not more than three people, that is clearly allowed as an accessory. Clearly. It may in fact be further regulated under the general bylaws if the A D approves the short-term rental law. But as a use, it's allowed. That's clear.
Right.
So you do, if you have more than four rooms of some type, could tweet from four to ten rooms, and you're renting them, that's like a B and B or a country inn sort of situation. That could also be a shortcut.
Sure, but what if I've got six rooms and I'm only renting to three people? Can I do it by right? Yeah, that's right. Well, then no, because then it comes out of the tourist home.
That's what I'm saying.
Definition trumps everything, because it says, uh, regardless of any other designation such as in-country and bed and breakfast, guest house, or the like.
So I'll tell you what, what I would like to see is just lodging homes in here. And do away with borders and the tourists, I don't see what good really the tourist home does, other than regulate short-term rentals.
Is there any equivalent to the tourist home in the state code?
Well, if, if there's, well, I guess short-term rentals would be different, right?
So that, that was my point with the tourist, I mean, it's basically a regulation of short-term rentals, so why do you have them? The lodging homes seems to be, you know, it's a Massachusetts state law, and it seems to be good enough, I think, to regulate what we want to regulate, which is the number of people I can rent or rent. And it's persons that we're worried about, it's not rooms, like rooms doesn't make it interesting.
Right.
So the, the final thing here is just an aside, and I think this might be an easy one. It might be good to add a definition of transient to the bylaw. Just because we have it in there. It's defined in the building code. It's a simple definition.
So it's in our table, but it's not just building.
Building code, the occupancy of the dwelling unit or sleeping unit, they're not more than thirty. It's, yeah, it's a transient. But it, you know, it goes for people renting hotels as well.
I, I, I think it's worth taking a look at, but I, I think it, maybe the tourist home really did, was meant to mean bedrooms. So maybe we should fix, if that's, if, if it still has some.
But it says, regardless of any other designation such as in-country, then breakfast, and guest house, or the like, so what would it be?
Yeah, well, it says, it means it's a tourist home, even if you have an in, it's still a tourist, it still falls under the tourist. Even if you have a bed and breakfast falls under the tourist, now why, what is, what does that mean? What is, if, if something is a tourist home, what does that mean besides that needs a special?
If there's something else in building code or in the health code that, because I, I'm more familiar with New York State, but in New York, eleven sleeping berths is the threshold for a hotel, and there's a whole new, like. So is that how this ended up here? They didn't want to trigger the requirement? It's, it probably. There have been tourist homes in the area for two hundred years.
Look, you have different tiers of uses in the zoning bylaw right now. The tourist homes for transient guests, which for simple terms are called bed and breakfast, is allowed by special permit in pretty much all zones. Hotels are not allowed in those, only in certain businesses. So a lot of the B and Bs that are in town are in residential zones. So if you take out the definition of tourist home for transient guests or beds and breakfast, you take it out of the used, then they're gone in, in the residential zone, a possibility in residential zones is gone. Because the lodging house is a fraternity?
No, including those.
But it, it's lodging houses, just rental, renting more and more people. So if you, so lodging house in your argument is, is the more inclusive and proper than this transit, okay, I, I didn't catch that earlier. But I think this three-tiered use, orders, lowest tier, allowed by right, middle tier, special permit for these B and B type lodging houses. Higher tier is eleven rooms is up, that eleven rooms to forty-five, as you do, is a hotel, commercial zones, but. So that's the way the used tiers work. Then the borders are allowed by right. If you only have lodging, the borders are allowed by right. And then there is no room limit, so there is no, the one thing we would be picking away is the difference between a hotel and, but wait a minute, the definition of a hotel probably says more than eleven rooms, right? Eleven, so it's still that. So if we took it out, then anything that's under eleven would reconsider a lodging. If you're renting to more than, to four or more people.
And are you wanting to change the fact that it would need a special permit?
Well, that, I mean, that's up for discussion. Because if, if, you know, if, if we, if the lodging house is adopted as a sole, you know, barrier here, and we allow, we call for special permits, then all the short-term rentals would be special permitted. The borders issue also implies that there's a resident owner or resident family on site during the rental. And a lodging house wouldn't wouldn't necessarily provide that. So, but it would, what it would do, though, to your point, is that it would allow you to, to just rent three rooms out without there even permanent resident. I think that's, I think that's a critical component of being by right, is that resident families is on-site, generally. I, I think that's.
Sure, I get it.
So I, I don't know, I don't know about conflating the boarding accessory use by right with a lodging house might be step too far. Both, I see your point.
So seven, one of the things we'd have to do is take a look at seven point sixteen, which is tourist homes for transient guests. If we're gonna eliminate that definition, then it's inside of this is applicable to lodging, right?
But are you trying to fold this into single-room occupancy too? Is that how you're, I'm just trying to understand your whole.
Because these, these things are so confusing to me, and, and I think it's overregulated, is my point. And I think, you know, like, I don't know, I think I made my point, but lodging houses can just take care of it all. And it simplifies them, the bylaw with the varsity as well, in my opinion.
Okay.
By the way, if, if we didn't want to strike the tourist home definition, we want to fix it. Seven point sixteen uses the term rental rooms, not just rooms. So, yeah, so, you know, four to ten rental rooms, and not just.
Right, but if we did away with it, you'd still.
It's still in logic, right, I mean, I get it.
Yeah, but you'd still, but the hotel definition would still separate, I think that, that's, I could be wrong. But I think that that room designation in the, that transient home thing, or in the tourist home definition or or language is there to differentiate it from the hotel.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
So, but if we put away the hotel, it has its own definition.
Well, the hotel will have its own definition anyway, but we have the substitute, if we wanted to regulate the four to ten, then we'd have to sub, uh, substitute lodging.
Sure.
For tourists.
Sure, yeah.
That's. I mean, it simplifies it.
So. So how are we to?
I'd like to, under, can you hang on just a second, I mean, so in terms of urgency, is there something that anybody has run up against, that this is like an urgent matter we need to take up? Because it seems like it's touching a bunch of different places in the code. And we may need to reconcile more than just, and maybe you've identified all the spaces in the code where there are potential conflicts, but I think you rattled off at least six different places, so.
Well, this came, this, I really started paying more attention to this when I started working with Josh Sherman and Windflower. And part of thinking about the finding a living thing and the whole thing, and where could this work, and then I started looking at this, it didn't make sense. Or at least, none of this seemed to, to apply to it, to that type of living, so that's how I got so interested in these three terms.
Sure.
I, 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 I think there's urgency in uh maybe at least cleaning up the definition of tourist home, so that it doesn't encompass S T Rs just because one person's in a four-bedroom house. Uh, and right now, when you leave the definition of tourist home, it, it reads that way, as if S T Rs need a special permit.
Place has three rooms or twelve rooms. And then you're not regulating. By this, by this law.
It should be rental. If we add the term rentals to the definition, would then exclude.
Yeah, the language is important, for sure.
I'm just concerned we're going to need, if we do that, we're going to need to also review it against the short-term rental bylaw, because I think there'll have to be some messaging about what is being intended in our week. Creating a, any potential conflict between the general. Uh, it may well be, I mean, I've had this conversation like a year and a half ago, when we were talking, because we started out with what regulations, when the short-term rental question came up, we started out with what regulations do we already have that we can build off of, and we went right to this one.
But I don't think we looked at it from the same viewpoint that Pedro just.
I think what, you're right.
And, and I did not read it this way, and I, and I absolutely think that that definition, if some, somebody wants to take that definition and challenge short-term rentals in the town, they might go and do that, I don't know who would want to do that, but I mean, I think somebody does.
Pedro, have you already looked at that? Any potential conflict between the tourist home, the seven point one six and the general bylaw?
Regulates time and.
All, all it means is that in our, I, one reading of the definitions and the use table of our bylaws, zoning bylaw, requires a special permit for a, uh, for a short-term rental that has more than three rooms.
Don't you think some people would think that was statuism?
I do, but I don't think that's, that's what town meeting intended last year, when they voted to regulate the, the S T Rs.
Okay, all right, we'll have to to think about that one. Because I feel like that's, it's like a, a thread on a sweater, and you kept pulling it, and it's, there's gonna be more to it, if it's touching.
I, I don't, I don't think so. First of all, I, I don't think the simple uh change I suggested involves any threats at all, because I think that's really the intent.
You just want to swap out definitions, strike. You just wanna swap out definitions, strike.
If we do, yeah, if we, no, I didn't, well, uh, at the very minimal, just add the word rental. Leave everything as it is, but add the word rental.
That's a good suggestion, but you wanna then add a definition swap, remove transient tourist home.
Remove tourist home and replace it with lodging. Now, that's, that, I think you need to look a little more in detail on that, but I think that's not a bad idea, but I think.
But why would we do a tiny incremental step and then a big step on the same thing? Does that make sense?
Um, the big step makes sense, that brings us in some line with the state definitions and the state regulation.
And, and in our use table, we have these two things that are not the. Tourist home and lodging are not the same thing and they're shared the same line.
Well, that's okay, because if you're building one or the other, you need a special, i- it's the same.
I guess you're right.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do it, yeah, I guess you're right.
Yeah.
But to answer your question, the only conflict I see is in our bylaw, because the tourist home, I think. Defines certain short term rentals that have four rooms. Or up to ten rooms. But it says. Well, look at seven point sixteen. Any establishment renting. More than three and less than eleven rooms.
So renting, so the word rental is already.
It's already, yeah. But you're renting, what kind of?
But it's not bed, I mean, okay.
The camera tried to follow Brandon to bathroom.
You have a house that has, that has more than, has four rooms. Or ten rooms, up to ten rooms. That is technically a short term rental. Or it's, the tourist home is a, is a short term rental, that requires special permit. Now, if we add, if you add what um, what Malcolm was saying, which I don't think it's rental, then the sleeping room. To the definition, then that's a different story. Wait, this is.
Well, rental room.
Here is problematic too, isn't it? So maybe it's specifically bedrooms. Cause that, cause every house, every house is.
Doesn't the building code provide sleeping rooms, not bedrooms?
Yeah.
But wouldn't rental room, like if you were renting two bedrooms for one price? That would be one rental room, right?
No, so, so if you're, if you're renting a suite, for example, uh, 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 you know, parlor.
Well, would it, would it even have to be a suite? What if it had two separate doors? But they were one price, right? Isn't that a rental room, even though it's two rooms? Like, I, I think it gets, doesn't it?
No, that's, that would be two rooms, I think, yeah.
I mean, I think the bet, the sleeping room thing is.
Well, I would just say merely from the length of our discussion here at St. Petersburg.
Yeah, I think you, like, I don't feel like we're making any progress.
Pedro, could, could you, I know you sent me all the building codes, but. It's intangible, could, could you take screenshots of the short term rental part and the? And, well, like I said, I ca- I called uh, D V R S. To ask them, what happened to the definition of short term rentals? So they used to be an appendix. There's not even any appendix anymore. And they told me that they, it's been moved to that use part, to the use table, or it's something use table. Occupancy designations, chapter three of the building. And it falls, it's, it's just defined there to give it some sort of regulation, because it falls under the R one, which is. Among other, who's hotel and motel, that it gives all of the same. Regulation that the building developers for that use. Short term rental by definition, and that table. That I, um, it's table one ten point seven. I don't know where the word is, and I can't find it, not even in the. I have the digital codes and it's not, not in there, so I don't know what's going on. But again, the, I think the building code thing is gonna be in inspection regime, which. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's not gonna be like our, our regulatory problem, but I think it's gonna be a problem for people wanting to use short term rentals and for our building official to. Regular. Because it's gonna be part of the.
Well. It'll be uh. Sometime, I'm sure, before those amendments are actually adopted. And secondly, I think.
January, January.
And it's less sanguine about that.
Who is that?
Yeah.
What is he not saying?
We studied. I, I think it, I think it puts the inspection regime on the operator of the unit. That they must call for. It doesn't say that the inspection must. Uh, be.
No, you're right about that.
For sure.
In any case, that.
Yeah.
They need to have it, then they won't be able to operate.
And he's gonna shut them. And from a staff perspective, this whole thing, boarding houses, lodging houses, hotels, is not a. Great area. So. I don't see an urgent need to proceed.
Okay.
I, I had a question, just in the state's definition of lodging uh, home. The four plus persons and the relation part, is that just the relationship between the person renting and the people? Uh, the person who's renting, um, the whatever, and uh, the people who are renting? Is that, or is the, I, I'm just wondering, when it's four or more people, how does it, like, what is? The people? So like, if a couple comes, that's two people? Like, I. You know, because the degree of, like, was the degree and relations, was that only between the person renting? Or the uh, the renter and the rentee, or was it? The relationship?
I, I, I'm sorry, but what, I don't understand.
My, my only question is, so like, if you're a family of five. And you're, right, does that put you into lodging home? Like, you're one family of five?
You're not related to the person you're renting from.
Exactly. Are you already in a lodging home then, right? See, that's, so that's one thing that I, I wonder about, because then it's, you know, single people, it's much easier. But if you have a family, then, right? Right, so, what I'm saying is like, so if you have three individual renters, it's not a lodging home. But if you have one family of five, it is.
Right.
That, so that's, so that's where I have.
But there's, there's a degree of transiency there. This is, we're not talking about a place of permanency, right?
No, I know, but it's, it seems like, right, and so it's.
Definition says nothing about time. It could be permanent.
But nevertheless, I mean, if you, you rent a three, you rent a five, it doesn't matter if it's a, a family of five or five families of one, and it's five. And it's, it's what's the capacity of the home, not the individual rental. It's not, you're not gonna change use, is it? One day they went to three individuals.
I am going to table this topic. Thank you. We need to move on. I, I have like.
We need to get you a gavel.
All ability to follow and figure out why we are.
Where we discuss.
Like, like, I, like, let's, let's put this in a context of relevance, and so if, if it's clarity of definitions. And that helps staff, let's get on it. But if staff is fine. We can, we can certainly reconcile inconsistencies in the code, absolutely, but. After like an hour, I just, I can't focus on this right now, I. Because we can continue the discussion, we'll leave it on the list. Uh, but I think we need to like, figure out what our objective is. So we already did board issues and concerns. Do you have a town planner's report, Chris?
Sure, next, so next meeting, you have a public hearing for the. Uh, proposed amendment to the very new book, special permit. And I will send you those applications, in fact, before we leave, I can give you a copy. Uh, it's probably new sites, is it? That I plan. So this is the ten. And it'll be dark.
Will be dark?
Well, no, they, yeah.
And. I- is it, do you think it's necessary for the applicant to explain anything to us, or can we see it if we go on our own time? Just so that people can go maybe when it's easier for them to get there. I think Jeremy and I will both have trouble getting there. Or potentially.
Okay, does anybody want an organized site visit with the applicant engineer showing you what's right?
What's the, um, what are they showing us?
Like swapping area.
Swapping building area and open space area on threshold line. Where are they in terms of the? Uh, finish of the infrastructure? Uh, pretty darn close, except for the top code basketball. Is there?
They'll probably, they'll probably finish by end of this year and do a top code.
They have four properties that are under waiting.
Yeah.
Waiting, so. Okay, can, can we deal with the site visit issue?
Yeah.
Before we get into the, sure, need of the proposal, which should be.
Do you need a site visit? Hold somebody up ahead?
No, I, I don't think so.
No, and so it sounds like no.
Fair enough. Um, don't leave without a copy of the special permit application. We have a special November meeting on the twenty second, is that right?
Correct.
So we can return to zoning that night. Um, what else did I have? Uh, whose time school, if you're interested, this like board is vetting the two finalists proposals. Saw one uh. This past Monday night, and the next one will be on the third, I think, of November. So if you're interested in watching.
Okay.
One is a mixed use proposal, one is entirely residential. Um, and then finally, North Plain Road site update. Uh, the, so Habitat. Or Humanity will be hosting another community meeting on November nine. At beginning at five thirty at Unitarian Church on Main Street this time. And. One of the objectives, as, at least I hope they achieve this objective, is to. Communicate with people who may be interested in living on the site and purchasing those homes about the designs. Of the homes. Talking about single homes or duplexes to try to get to some of the comments that this board had. When you review the plans, because the design of the homes and the layout of the homes and the ownership of lots or condos. Bears on the designs that you all saw, so they're gonna hopefully get some answers to those questions. Um, anyway, it's open to the public. Uh, so you feel free to attend.
Great, thank you.
And. I think that's all I have.
Okay, no big petitions coming down the road or anything? No, okay. All right. Uh, any citizens out there want to speak? Please raise your hands and then Chris can unmute you. There's like two people.
No cats.
Okay, see, no hands, we can adjourn at eight twenty four. Yo.